East Bay Township Board to order, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll stand.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every due justice for all.
Okay, and we'll do roll call.
Lyle.
Here.
Bartlett.
Here.
S. Cortaid.
Here.
M. Cortaid.
Here.
Cook.
Here.
Walters.
Present.
And Friend.
Here. Okay, agenda, review for conflict of interest. On our agenda, we have consent calendar, which is the traditional board minutes, and the different funds for payment, as well as a poverty exemption, income guidelines, and asset test policy update, and the live AE development reimbursement agreement. You did just receive that today, so happy to pull that if you like, but there's not much, you know, we change and the attorneys are going over that. Before us, we have several reports, and we will talk a little bit about our audit date and timelines, engineering, planning and zoning, and clerk's department, part-time job description. Is there any conflict of interest? Okay, seeing none, is there approval of the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Support.
Okay, that is, there's a motion by Lyle and supported by Cook. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by no? Okay, motion passes. We will move on to public comment. If anyone would like to give public comment, please come up to the podium, introduce yourself, state your name, and let us know your perspective. Is there any public comment at this time? Okay, seeing no public comment, I will take the opportunity to let you know that you have a flyer here for the Grace McDonald sledding party, February 1st, so nice time. A lot of people like to use that sledding hill, and the Parks Commission will be out there. I mean, a nice fun event. And then you also had a little, little coin placard, just to give you an idea of some of the things that you find in the geocaching that they've started doing, too. So that's like one of the little tokens they do for geocaching. So just wanted to bring those to your attention. With that, we'll move to correspondence and reports. You have those in your packet. They include the County Road Commission weekly updates. We have three in there, the PAR Plan newsletter, some planning and zoning workshops through Michigan Association of Planning, Treasurers Report, Clerks Report, Supervisors Meeting Log, as well as links for some of the recent meetings. Does anyone have any questions on any of those? Okay, with that, we will go to the consent agenda, and if you'd like to go over the consent agenda, Ann, that would be terrific.
Sure. The purpose of the consent agenda is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one board motion without discussion. Any member of the board, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent agenda be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent agenda, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single board action adopting the consent calendar. This evening, you have minutes from December 9th, 2024, regular meeting, and December 30th, 2024, special meeting, recommend approval. The general fund, check numbers 19207 through 19296, paid in the amount of $179,416.74, with check numbers 19220 through 19266 voided, and check numbers 19064 and 19081 previously approved. From the emergency fund, check numbers 5799 through 5821, paid in the amount of $101,979.98. Receiving fund, check numbers 2958 through 2963, in the amount of $643,943.93. Escrow fund, check numbers 2049 through 2059, for $16,013.38. There was nothing paid from the Roads SAD Fund, and there were two payrolls. The first one dated December 1st through December 14th, check number 7885 through 7889, totaled $70,563.35. And the payroll dated December 15th through December 28th, plus a special pay of December 31st, 2024, and third-party long-term disability liability, check numbers 7890 through 7892, totaled $80,685.2 cents. Total payroll was $151,248.37. Total amount paid was $1,092,602.40. There are no proposed budget adjustments, and two other items, the poverty exemption income guidelines and asset test policy, Resolution 25-01, and the live AE development and reimbursement agreement of the Brownfield Plan.
Well, you're swifter than me. I was just gonna ask what resolution number we're starting on. I forgot, we're at a new year, so terrific. And you did, for the board's attention and for the public, we did receive an updated correction on the draft minutes for December 9th, so that would as well be corrected and included with the consent agenda. Is there anything that any member of the board would like removed from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, would any member of the public like anything removed from the consent agenda? Okay, we'll bring that back to the board for a motion or discussion? Is there a motion? Actually, not discussion, because it's consent agenda, but is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, as approved.
Support.
Okay, there is a motion by Bartlett and supported by M. Cortaid. Any further discussion? We'll do a roll call.
Bartlett.
Yes.
M. Cortaid.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Lyle.
No.
S. Cortaid.
Yes.
And Friend.
Yes. Okay, with that, we will move to the business before the Township Board, and organizational reports or updates, and we have Grand Traverse County, and Commissioner Darrell Nelson is here. Would you come up and join us and give us an update? How are you this, this new year?
Good, Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Running a little bit late because I got behind the county plow on five mile, but that's not a complaint.
Two hundred feet.
Yep, I stayed back, and I had the wing out, and so five mile and all the way out, and front hearing Hammond is, is completed, I can report that. I was actually doing research, I wasn't running late. I, excuse me, I don't have a lot to report. It's the new year. We haven't really done a lot of business since back in December. We do have a new chair and a new vice chair, and the, they, there was a person who had to run for chair who didn't have any support with his own party, so he went to the other party and got support from them. Neither one of them was, they had the plan, but neither one of them was prepared for what we're supposed to do on our first organizational meeting, so we don't have our subcommittees set up or any of that kind of stuff. I'm hoping to stay on the same committees I'm on, but we'll find out what happens. So hopefully, this coming week on Wednesday, they haven't talked to me, I've reached out to them to talk about it, haven't heard anything back, so we're kinda figuring things out, I guess. So unless you guys have any questions, I don't have much to report on.
I don't think I do at this time. I did see the process, and maybe this is more of a fair question for Warren, but the process that the townships went through, the county engaged Traverse Connect and the townships with talking about economic development and what the townships needed. We had a series of meetings last year, and I think I've mentioned those before, or surely they've been in my reports, but I did have an email recently that they're, they have a cumulative plan that they're presenting to the EDC with the county, so that's good to hear.
Yeah, yeah, they do that every year. Something that I hear is coming is there's gonna be a request for money from the county for the Safe Harbor Shelter, to open that up year-round. So I'll be looking for feedback from you guys, I don't wanna do that without consideration. I have kind of my own opinions on that, but I'd love to hear from you guys, you're probably reaching out to some people about that, they're looking for like $200,000 from the county for a couple of years, but we know how that works.
And I heard the Mental Health Center that was really ARPA-funded, that you guys worked pretty hard on, opened.
Yep, it is open, and that's, it's not 100% open. Ideally, eventually, it'll be a 24/7, one stop, I use the term one-stop shop, for any mental health, mental health crisis type of thing, you can go there and get directed to where you need to go. Eventually, there will be beds that will be open, so that, you can't, you know, you can't create that overnight. So the space is built out, they're opened up, and they're not, I don't think they're staffed 24/7 yet, so it's part of the thing, but I think that's gonna be a really good thing. We had some real holes in our community, so we recognize that, and we, it's been a significant amount of money toward that. There is a report gonna be coming out, remember, we, we talked about community, mental health, Northern Lakes Community Mental Health, we felt maybe there's some issues there. There was smoke, we were wondering if there was fire, there was a, an audit that occurred, forensic audit, going back deeper. There are some problems that were going on. We have since changed the management and hopefully righted that ship, but some of that other stuff is gonna come out, and not sure what's gonna happen based on that. But getting Northern Lakes Community Mental Health back in doing, doing better, even the recipients were complaining that we're just really not getting the, I don't mean the, I mean organizations that work with them, were complaining they weren't getting the services they needed. That in conjunction with the new one-stop-shop, the Community Mental Health Center, I think things would be a lot better. I mean, you heard some terrible stories about people who just had nowhere to go. So that's the plan, is that, you know, have a place you can go, and you can get immediate help. It's kinda set up like in the front, like a doctor's office, and then you go in and there's, there's counselors, there's areas, and, you know, so it's, it's a good, it's a good setup. Think of like a walk-in clinic for community mental health.
Mindy?
I know somebody who went there recently, and it's not ready to go yet, so.
They're, they're like in the baby steps.
So, let's just make sure everybody knows that it's not there yet, it's coming, but it's not, the doors are open, but they're not ready to serve in a one-stop-shop capacity.
Getting licenses, getting staffing, getting the 24/7, getting the beds, all of that is underway. You know, it, it, we've, we've got the build-out, we've got the doors open during the day, there's people there, and it's gonna take a while, you think about in the community when there's all these different organizations, some are nonprofit, some are, are through Munson, some are through Northern Lakes Community Mental Health, getting them all into that referral system, so it's gonna, it's not gonna be easy, but it's gonna be hopefully a damn sight better than what we had, and that, that needed to be, so.
And then one thing, too, I'll just mention, recently, to the BPW, the county has presented to us as part of your, is it called the Alpha Project?
Yes, the first, the build-out for the 901 Center in Upper La Frayner, yes.
So the county is apparently, administration's looking at how they, because we're in the public service building, that they would eventually, I think they would demolish that building eventually, and we would be in an adjacent building, and the storage and shop would be out of there as well. So it'd be all co-located, which has an impact on the property on South Airport that they operate a shop out of right now. So those are literally in just the initial discussions, they just presented to the BPW like a week ago. And, you know, we'll be taking a look at that. I think a lot of the interest from us is that a lease would not be bad, the lease that's built on, not ownership or, or repayment or anything like that, but just a straight lease, might be, might work really well, because we never know with the Board of Public Works if it'll stay the kind of configuration it is, or will it be an authority or that sort of thing, so it gives the most flexibility, but those are just real, very initial discussions, and we appreciate it having Chris Forsythe there to present that.
And to clarify, we, and I, I see you have your hand up, too, we, we hired Cunningham Limp, Cunningham Limp to be our, our owner's agent, so they're experts in managing these projects, and even though there's a cost associated with having them there, I can guarantee you that we'll make better decisions and probably save the money. They're, they're on this, it's, you know, there's a certain amount of bandwidth and certain amount of expertise that everyone has at the county. Cunningham Limp has been really good about going out and looking at, and talking to the different stakeholders, like what works and how does this work, but also just the management of the contractors.
Yeah, they're a part of a lot of great projects.
Yeah.
Grand Rapids and North, and I'm sure all over. Glenn, did you have a question?
Yeah, on this new building that Munson is gonna be staffing, they've started, but are they gonna, is there talk about doing away with Center One up at Munson and moving it to that location, or, and how many beds will they have?
You know, boy, to answer the last part of your question, I was there and I saw the beds, it's a, it's a hallway that, I'm gonna guess there was five or six rooms on each side of the hallway, so I wanna say like 12 beds. I heard the number, I don't remember. As regard to Center One, I'm not sure how that works, I'd be way over my skis explaining that, so I'd rather have somebody else, who knows, but my, my guess would be that Center One has a certain medical, critical crisis, and it's when the people are done there, where do they go? So I know that, my understanding and talking to people, it's like you're there, you're in crisis, you get stabilized, and then, you know, just, it doesn't, and it's like, it's like if you go in there for like a broken leg, you need the follow-up later, the mental health part, there's the, the emergency, and then there's, and I think the step would be next to go over to this building, but I, I'm not in that profession, so I'm guessing.
We can, we can get the information and follow-up with you, for sure.
Yeah, I will, I'll ask that question, because we're gonna get a report on Wednesday at the meeting, so I'll ask the question, I'll give me a reason to call you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Darryl? Well, thank you for being here tonight, much appreciate it.
I've got that chest stuff that's going around, and so I'm gonna, I got an amoxicillin tablet waiting for me at home, so I'll listen for the couple of reports, but I'm not gonna stay for the entire meeting.
Sounds good, and be careful driving.
Oh, yeah, thanks, well, it's all plowed.
Yeah.
Keep it, if you got it, keep it. Don't share it.
I'm not gonna kiss you.
All right, very good. We'll move on to the County, Grand Traverse County Road Commission, and I see that Larry is here and Elisa is here. How are you this evening?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you.
So we have a few updates, obviously, we're battling snow on a daily. We have 31 plow routes that we do on a, in the day, and we have about six guys that come in at night, and then they try to go, you know, 12 hours on, 12 hours, 12 hours off, so we're continuing to battle the winter, so it sounds like next week's gonna be very cold, so we'll see what shapes out when, when it snows, 'cause usually the system snow doesn't really tell us what we're gonna get, you know?
Larry, can't you do something about that part of it?
Yeah, that would be great, wouldn't it? But definitely different snow, you know, weather than we've had in the past couple of years, so. So our guys are going at it, they've been working really hard at it, and, and we really appreciate their efforts. Little update from our Kingsley site, we do have that finally open, so we're, we're fully running out of there, our, we have nine trucks that run out of that during the day, and then we have two in the evening that run out of the, out of the Kingsley facility, so that's up and running. We still have a few things to do out there, so we're kinda, kinda doing a few button-ups, but we're getting it set up for them, so it's good. We do have, our board has actually stayed the same, so our chair is still Hyder, and our vice chair is still Joe Underwood, so our chair, our board is still the same, so. I think, anything else, really, I think in East Bay Township, I think there's a few things going on. We did touch a little bit of trees in the, in the Scout Camp area, just to kinda open that up a little bit. We're not being real aggressive, but we're just trying to open that up a little bit to get some sun laid on the road, to dry that out for the spring, and then we'll probably be in there a little bit, trying to, to get that to dry, like I said, dry out, get that water off that road as best we can, so, doing a little bit there.
I did get a chance to tell Matt Cook about your town line road plans.
Yes.
But I haven't, you know, I don't know that that's gone to the rest of the board in any format, but adjusting basically what your fix is, and then not the need for the, the full collaboration that we were looking at before.
Right, and I don't know all the specifics on it, but I do know that they're doing an adjustment and trying to, trying to get it fixed better than it is. It's not gonna be the perfect road fix, but it's gonna be something that's gonna be better than what it is, especially when we have to do some detours and whatnot, and go, go through that, but yes. I can get you some more details on that, though, from, from our engineer.
That sounds good.
You know, at the MTA meeting on Thursday, that Joe had said there was gonna be an overlay put on it, so that they could do the three-mile roadwork.
Yeah, I believe that's what they ended up doing, is, is doing an overlay. But again, it's not, the original plan is to kinda dig everything up and make it a brand-new road, but we're doing it on a little less of a, of a fix, so.
Yeah, Dan mentioned it's more like a five-year, maybe at best a 10-year fix, but it's not a real fix for the road.
Correct.
But, you know, if it's, if it's the best you can do, it's the best you can do, you know?
Yep.
Sometimes you gotta be pragmatic.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But then that means there's no cost sharing, right?
That, I'm not totally positive.
Yeah, there's.
I don't know yet, I mean, you've probably talked to Dan more than I have on that.
There's no cost sharing, from what I remember, from Garfield's or our part, and so we'll be, you know, talking with them about, 'cause we have, I think, like three years built up, or whatever it was, so we'll be talking with you guys about, you know, where you feel that that should maybe be best used, and then bring that back to this board, but, yeah, that sounds good. Any other questions? Glenn?
Well, three months ago, I think your boss was here, and I brought up Holiday Road down in the valley.
Okay.
Okay, that road is separating in the center, the two halves, there's water that sets in there, and of course, we know what happens when water sets in.
Sure.
And freezes.
Yep.
And he was gonna do some checking into it, in all fairness to you folks, I brought this up the last administration, or two administrations ago, so it's, it's been getting worse as we go, and the inside corners on the valley stretch are all busting up, because for some reason, people can't drive on the blacktop, they gotta get off the edge, and of course, you know what that does.
Sure.
But I just don't want it forgotten, and I, hopefully, there's nothing they're gonna do for those cracks in the wintertime, we know, but, you know.
Yeah, I can follow up on that for sure. I do know, especially, like you said, when, when those cars get off onto that gravel shoulder, they can blow that out, and it's very hard to, to try to keep track of all that, so, like I said, I always, I always am pushing my, that, that app, you know, if you see something in that app, or, or even call us directly and just say, hey, we have a problem here, 'cause that way we can start to, you know, start to plan and start to get things together for when we go out and we get some, a reprieve from the winter, then we can go out and say, hey, let's go fix all these little spots, you know? But we are trying to, to remedy some of those issues, but yeah, a lot of those roads don't have that proper crown in it, and they actually have a sink in it, so that's where that water lays, and.
Well, that road was new enough, I would've thought that crowning would all, but it was a brand-new road, I mean, complete.
When was that done, Glenn?
I wanna say 16, 16.
2010?
I'd have to look at the picture.
Oh, it was earlier than that.
Was it?
Yeah.
14, maybe, I don't know, I got the pictures, that whole.
Because I remember the project, and it actually was constructed right when I left office.
And what year was that?
16.
So typically, we'll try to, if we do an improvement, especially a paved road, now we're, we're hitting it with a chip seal on top of it, we're trying to really keep our good roads good, so we spend a lot of time on those roads we just paved to, to extend that service life of that road. And that's what we're really getting into right now, too, with engineering, and then obviously our, our maintenance program, where we're, we're getting a program together for this summer, for next summer, the following summer, so that we can get in front of that, you know, things like that, maintenance, to extend that service life, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Larry?
One, one other comment. Whoever plows Holiday Road, you give him a big hug for me. Whoever it is, he does a beautiful job.
All right, I will let him know, thank you. It's nice to get a little positive feedback.
Well, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lisa, did you have anything to add?
I was here to listen mostly to your annual report for planning, but obviously, you guys know where that comes from.
Okay, all right. All right, well, that does bring us to our next agenda item, which is Traverse Connect, and Camille Hoyzington and Warren Coller here. How are you?
Very well, thanks.
Good.
Good evening, everyone.
And you have a document for us of the Economic Development Strategy, as well as the Professional Services Contract.
Absolutely. Yeah, thanks for having us back here and for the ongoing partnership that we have with East Bay Township. It's a pleasure to work with, with you and with, with the staff in the township. The, first order of business here is the, the East Bay Township Economic Development Strategy, and I'm joined by, by Camille Hoyzington from our team, who has been the point person on this, and she'll cover a lot of the details, but just from a standpoint of what we're gonna cover with this, I'll go into a little bit of background for, for kind of why we did this project together. Camille will cover some of the, kind of the, the core areas that are, that are outlined in, in the report, and then I'll, I'll go over some of the, kind of the, the end parts, as well as maybe review a few, a few, a few next steps for you. Our, our service agreement contract that we have at East Bay Township covers a pretty, pretty broad scope, scope of things, from business expansion projects, attraction efforts, the, some of the things that are related to talent attraction and development, as well as kind of broad community convening. In addition to those kind of broader things... In addition to those kind of broader things, the, we've also usually focused on kind of a specific project or scope of, of work that's really unique to, to, to the township, and in, in last year's professional service agreement, it was, it was this report, which outlined work with, with our team and East Bay Township staff to prepare a local economic development strategy, and the key thing was that it needed to align with the expectations and the requirements to become certified as a redevelopment-ready community, so that's that abbreviation, that's a state-level designation, redevelopment-ready, or RRC. Now, let me be honest with you, that, you know, RRC designation requires a lot of detail. It, it has, and it requires kind of a full strategy plan, it's extensive list of criteria, so what you end up with is a, frankly, a pretty lengthy report. So, we weren't trying to overload your inbox, but that's kind of a requirement of this process from the state-level requirements. We'll, we'll only touch on some key highlights tonight to, to, you know, be respectful of your time, but happy to go into any detail if, if you wanted to go into, you know, additional items. So, in addition to the, the state's RRC guidelines, we also referenced a lot of other material, so other regional economic development strategy plans that have previously been, you know, led to the approval, the approval of that RRC designation, so Nagani, for example, Oak Park. We also drew from some of your existing materials, so your master plan, the, the Beach District implementation material, the 2023 corridor improvement study, obviously some of our economic development reports and, and strategic plan, and then to, to Beth's comment earlier, also the, the unified plan that we're working on, on behalf of Grand Travers County, which plays into this, which I'll go into a little, little bit more detail about that in a few minutes. So, I'm going to turn it over to Camille to, to go through some of the, the key items of chapters one through five in the report, but before I do so, is there any kind of background or level-setting questions, or any, Beth, anything I haven't covered that you think's relevant at this point?
I just want to make sure. We're already one year into this. Was that a single-year commitment, and now we're starting at one? Because when I'm looking at three, the compensation that's on your document, page five, our packet, page 47, it's showing that 2025, I guess, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, good question. So, let me clarify. What we did over the last couple of years is had a one-year service agreement with East Bay Township, and that was by design, and in fact, this question came up last time. Why aren't the, why aren't the agreements in, in longer time periods? And it's because we want to make sure that we're doing the right work and the work that you want done. So, what, I think the direction that we received from this group was a couple of years of one-year contracts, and then coming back, so the report that we're going to go over first is what was the work that was done in the 2024 single-year contract. Then, after we go through that report, we can talk about that contract for services, which would, again, at, kind of based on the conversation we had last time, rather than coming back for a one-year renewal on an ongoing basis, it's a three-year contract that then you can, you, you can have it renew over three years, or at any point, you could kind of push pause and decide to, you know, reevaluate. Does that answer your question?
Just, thank you.
Okay, great.
Yeah, there's a pretty easy termination clause in it, too.
Right, right. Yeah, and it, it is very much in line with the, the agreements we have with, with your partner municipalities, other townships, the county, et cetera. And with that, I'll turn it over to Camille.
Great, thank you. Hi, Camille.
Hello. Thank you. Okay, so I am going to give you all a very brief overview of the very, the lengthy report, so as not to bore you, I'll just go over each chapter very briefly, to sort of get you acquainted with what, what you have in front of you. So, chapter one is the community framework, which gives a, an overview of East Bay Township. It is a lot of content you will have already seen. As Warren alluded to, we, we drew from East Bay Township's master plan, from the Beach District implementation team's work to date, and then also our corridor improvement study from 2023. So, the, the community framework, as outlined by the RRC guidelines, it gives a, a general overview of the township, it goes into details on demographics and population, typical economic development indicators that need to be seen, such as median income, educational attainment, occupations, that type of thing. And then that chapter also covers mission, vision, and strategic goals. Some key highlights on that are to develop East Bay Township into a vibrant, inclusive community, where natural beauty is harmonized with a diversified economy, and then also to continue to focus on key sectors, such as the tourism and service industries, which are obviously really important to the township, as well as manufacturing, and then innovation-driven enterprises as a key driver for economic development, so a key sector to, to think about developing. And then, of course, addressing critical needs within the sort of community development realm, workforce housing, multimodal transportation, and infrastructure improvements for the township as a whole. So that is chapter one, community framework. Chapter two is a, a brief SWOT analysis, so looking at some key strengths. Obviously, proximity to Traverse City and the bay and the water is a key strength, as well as East Bay Township's proximity to Cherry Capital Airport, with increasing passenger traffic. The airports had record years, the last two years in a row, so that's, that's a key strength that we, we saw. Some weaknesses, probably to be expected, around limited affordable housing options, and that obviously can constrain some workforce retention, and then seasonal tourism dependency could be viewed as a weakness as well. Some key opportunities are to transform those corridors that have been identified, obviously the East Bay Beach District, and then the Hammond Road, East Bay Corners Corridor as well. Those corridors have opportunity and potential to become vibrant mixed-use spaces, and then also leveraging ecotourism and some key redevelopment-ready opportunity sites that we, we go into in more detail in, in further chapters. And then some threats that were identified are environmental risks, particularly in the waterfront areas, which are sensitive zones, and then potentially competition for, for investment from neighboring townships as a potential threat. Chapter three goes into the key subregions and corridor developments, again, drawing from the master plan and from the work that Beckett and Raider have done to date along the East Bay Corridor. East Bay Beach District, the vision is to revitalize that, that US 31 corridor to enhance walkability, create public spaces, support mixed-use development, and drawing, again, from Beckett and Raider's recommendations to implement traffic camming, better usage for pedestrians, developing a community pier, improving waterfront access, and creating wayfinding signage, and enhancing the streetscape with, with public art and landscaping. And then East Bay Corners, the vision is to establish more of a, a main street feel with higher-density mixed-use development, and some key recommendations to help sort of move that along would be to rezone some parcels for, for mixed-use development to support retail, restaurants, and workforce housing, developing a civic plaza at the corner of Hammond and Three Mile, and then improving the multimodal infrastructures with sidewalks, bike lanes, and the, the work that the township's been doing towards safe routes to schools. Chapter four goes into some of those opportunity sites that we've identified as redevelopment-ready. The Beach District opportunity sites are, are outlined in the Beckett and Raider report, they're the O'Grady Parcel, which is between the Green Car Wash and the Dairy Queen. That parcel has been identified as being prime for potential health-oriented businesses, such as gyms and cafes, and then there's the Mitchell Creek Inn parcel as well, which has potential for outdoor gathering spaces, food trucks, vacation rentals, and then the End of Four Mile Road, that's been identified as a place to transform into a public park with community pier and improved trail connectivity, yes.
Can I just interrupt for just a minute?
Of course.
In the past, we've all been told that the End of Four Mile is not East Bay, that it becomes DNR. There's an end of the road, when there was supposed to be a revitalization that was happening, when someone did some work that they shouldn't have done, that parcel, that they wanted to improve that, too, but it is not East Bay Township. Has that been settled? And I'm sorry, Camille, I may not be in the right spot.
It is. It's Grand Travers County Road Commissions, and at first, we felt that, we, we thought we understood that they wanted to retain that for the snow plowing, but in talks with their administration, they are interested in potentially abandoning that and allowing for the township to revitalize that through the, through the Beach District, so.
Okay, so it's, it's Grand Travers County Road.
Road Commission.
Right now, not, not DNR.
Rolled under.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
No problem. Okay, so some other opportunity sites that were identified in East Bay Corners, and drawing from our corridor study that we did in 2023, and then also working with Claire, we identified the, the Chartwell PUD, the North and South Parcels there as potential for, having potential for redevelopment into mixed-use spaces with a focus on workforce housing and commercial activity. Also, looking at the industrial parks within East Bay Township, looking at how to utilize those remaining vacant lots to attract some light manufacturing and high-tech industries, working with some of the local education institutes for workforce development programs, and then considering some maker space or eco-friendly infrastructure updates as well within those industrial parks. And then another opportunity site that was identified is the property at Mitten Drive opposite Costco and the airport, which would be ideal for retail office space or some kind of drive-through opportunity. So, chapter five goes into housing and transportation initiatives.
Can I stop you real quick?
Yes.
On page 31 of your report, or page 82 of our packet, the second bullet point talks about work with property owners to encourage mixed-use retail and workforce housing, and that's the Bayside Market and the one to the left of it, which would be the current Calypso. I just went through Planning Commission last week, and it's going to be seven-figure residential townhouses.
Yep, definitely. This, remember, when they're doing this report, this is work that had preceded that, and Claire had met with, yep, go ahead, Claire, come on up. Claire had met with the property owners to try and do a collaborative mixed retail and workforce housing. Go ahead, Claire.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. I would just say, you know, we did facilitate a conversation with three of the property owners, and I think there is acknowledgement that it would be cool to coordinate, acknowledgement that it would be challenging to coordinate, and so, you know, while we have a couple site plans that have been approved, a couple different properties that are kind of ripe for redevelopment, I think until you actually get the development in the ground, we can always see, you know, other, other opportunities emerge as different, so.
I know, there's still a draft, and this might, by the time this gets finalized, we might want to reword that in a different way, is, is kind of my point.
But I, if I had a couple bucks for every development that was approved that didn't get put in.
There's quite a list on this, Mitten and Brigatine and.
I mean, some of them, I'm thankful they didn't get done, because it's left more open space up on the bay, but there's, you know, yeah, so, okay, great. Good point. Thank you.
It's draft.
But before you do go on, I do want to mention, on these sites that you've isolated, too, Travers Connect is uploading them to your site. Do you want to talk a little bit about that site real quickly?
Yeah, you're, you're referencing Zoom Prospector. Yeah, so we will be doing some work over the next year to upload opportunity sites to Zoom Prospector, which is provided through the MEDC. We're doing that through Outgrown Travers County, so these sites, not all of them, but most of them, will be uploaded to that, to that website, so we can sort of highlight them as key development opportunities. And I think it's, it is important to, as you pointed out, it is in draft format, so this is, you know, pending approval.
A little document.
Yes. Thank you.
Well, the other thing I will point out is that that property has already changed hands, so different than a lot of, a lot of projects where there's, somebody has an option to buy a property, or he already bought it, or they already bought it, so it's, it's a little bit different than most of our prospecting projects. It's not going to be affordable in any way, shape, or form, though.
At least not now. Well, thank you. So, chapter five goes into housing and transportation initiatives and recommendations, but this will not be surprising to any of you, but the recommendations for housing are to expand high-density residential zoning to encourage affordable housing, mixed-use developments, consider rezoning key parcels along or adjacent to Hammond Road, to include them, include them in the East Bay Corners Corridor for, for more of that cohesive development along the Hammond Road Corridor, and then considering things like providing incentives like tax abasements and density bonuses for developers, creating workforce housing specifically. And then with transportation, the recommendations are to partner with MDOT to improve ADA compliance and pedestrian safety, expanding tar-trail connections to improve non-motorized travel options and more cohesiveness, and then enhancing the, the Hammond Road Corridor with traffic camming, sidewalks, and bike lanes, again, to sort of create that, that more cohesive feel, and considering multimodal transportation that is not just revolving around the car. So that covers chapters one through five. I'm going to let Warren cover the, the last two chapters, but before I do that, are there any questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Camille. Before I move on to that, the, kind of the last two chapters, covering some of the bigger-picture things, to that point, you know, I met directly with the owners of those various parcels with the, the Bayside Market potential development several times over the last couple of years, and to your point, it's not necessarily, right now, set to be what we'd consider to be affordable, but we have had a lot of discussions, we're, we're encouraging, you know, those property owners to, to think about what's possible, so we'll continue to do that.
Well, I think the fact that you've got the one that's proposed on the backside of the Bayside Market, and then this one where it's proposed at the Calypso, it's kind of showing what the developers think that they need, that we need down there, versus what the community knows we need, if you will.
Absolutely.
Because the one on the south side of the Bayside, they want to just do short-term rentals, and then the one at the Calypso, they didn't want to talk about bus stop because they don't want kids in this development, and, but they did say that they didn't want rentals less than 30 days in it, so.
Right. And with any of those type of projects, you know, we're trying to bring together, what's the region's kind of economic development priorities, what's East Bay's priorities, what are your zoning and, you know, current, current rules? So, we're trying to educate those property owners as they think about, you know, what's possible. A good example of that, you know, there's, you know, the corner of Three Mile on the west side, where, where Mitchell Creek Inn is, there's some thoughts about what that could be and, and some development potential there as well, so we're having those conversations and continue to advocate for the, the broad mix of what's possible.
Well, the other thing, too, and far be it from me to, you know, voice some of the, the issues that developers face, but the cost that they are paying for these properties, it's very difficult sometimes to, to put something in that would be more affordable.
Yeah, regardless of whether it's, you know, Beach District in East Bay, or frankly, any place in the region, the, the cost of, of property is a challenging factor for, for all of us, certainly.
Well, we've got a hotel owner that has been trying to find some housing for his staff, and they've come to us a couple times with a couple different proposals on, but nothing's actually shovel happening because of the cost, so, I mean, it's very, it's a very difficult predicament that we're in right there, because they want. they want, you know, if they're right there, they don't have to have cars or anything else. But, you know, the cost down there is so much greater than.
Right.
That's why the Brownfield MISHDA and the housing application of the Brownfield statutes that Warren has worked with extensively is so important, and we're seeing those percolate in our area and Willmore, I think, and even in East Bay Township. And that's a really, a really useful tool for developers. But it is a learning curve for some of them. I mean, Claire and I have sat through several meetings with developers explaining that process, which we've only gone through in a very limited means ourselves, so.
Absolutely. A lot to work on. To round out the rest of this report, Chapter Six is something that outlines kind of what are those regional efforts and how does East Bay's strategy connect in with and interact with those regional efforts. So it shows, we've showed that it aligns with the regional efforts that are part of what Travers Connect does, what Networks Northwest's operations include, as well as the other agencies, you know, 20 Fathoms, the Small Business Development Center, et cetera, focusing on, you know, fostering entrepreneurship, innovation, infrastructure improvements in transportation, housing, and livability. It also, we've shown how this strategy leverages kind of the region's ongoing and Travers Connect's role in diversifying the economy through business attraction, you know, branding the region as a center for lots of different businesses, not just, you know, hospitality, for example, addressing critical challenges to support our employers like housing and childcare, and then, of course, increasing the viability and frankly, the collaboration amongst partners. To the point raised earlier, it also pulls in Grand Travers County's, the Economic Development Corporation's work that we've been doing with them over the last year-plus on a unified prosperity plan. Now, that is an effort under the county's support to bring all the municipalities in Grand Travers County together to talk through what's possible. And I would highlight that that was about what do the townships want to see, what are their priorities, and then how can the county support it? And I think that was the final report to that that outlines, not just kind of the goals, but the specific action steps under several goals to get to where we want to get to, is just about finalized. We presented the final draft to the Economic Development Corporation on Thursday morning last week, and we expect to have final edits back from that board and that final report issued in February. So that'll be out there as well. It really aligns well with some of your priorities, corridor development, zoning efficiency, business support, and then kind of that inter-municipal collaboration that makes things work. Obviously, we've outlined that East Bay Township's actively contributing and involved in all these initiatives and aligned with some of the other regional things that are going on. And then, you know, really what it outlines is that instead of working in silos, the community partners are coordinating efforts, which is important at the state level to get their buy-in and support. The final chapter is about implementation, the timeline for that, the metrics for success. So it outlines the first 12 months, which is Phase One, which includes community workshops to refine the vision, kind of somewhat similar, you know, doing what, in East Bay Corners, what was already somewhat done in the Beach District with the visioning process. It looks at grant funding to help with implementation. And then years one through three, kind of Phase Two, looking at launching some of these mixed-use projects in the East Bay Corners and the Beach District, kind of setting the stage, updating and reinforcing the themes that you have, kind of your vision for what those corridors should look like. Tart Trail expansion, Saferds to School, all those things. And then Phase Three, which is longer term, kind of three to five years, some of the infrastructure upgrades in the industrial park in Beach District, kind of adjust and reevaluate these things. And really, once you get kind of past three years, these are all documents and plans that need to be updated significantly. And then looking at key indicators and success metrics. This is a key thing because it's like, economic development can sometimes be kind of ephemeral. You got to really dial in on what you're going to track. So looking at, in the terms of this plan, what's the value per acre and how does it increase? Which obviously impacts tax revenue and land use decisions. Looking at new residential and commercial square footage growth, and then growth in business formations and expansions. And then ultimately, and this is not going to be necessarily an easy thing, but reductions in housing cost burdens and increase in homeownership rates ideally would be kind of the long-term goals. So those are kind of the bigger-picture things at the end of the report. From a next step standpoint, obviously, we want to reiterate that this is a draft that has, you know, had some work, both from our team and from the staff, put into it, but we welcome the input that you might have before this gets finalized, your ideas. So any feedback, if we could ask for that over the next, you know, week or two, we'd like to be able to move forward and obviously work with, you know, Sam, Claire, and Beth on the team here to formalize and finalize this. So that's where things stand right now with the report. I can talk about the service agreement for next year, but I want to pause here and make sure we cover everything with the report first.
Any questions on the report? Okay, that, yeah, that would be great if anybody had any specific feedback to get that to you in the next week or two. Would you like that directed to you or to Camille?
Yeah, Camille can take that resource collection as needed, and obviously, we do welcome your input, and this is ultimately your plan. So welcome that.
We'll make sure that you've got Camille's email, and you can send anything there. If you would, certainly copy, you know, Planning and Zoning Department or Claire, that would be terrific. And then we'll bring that back for our final approval.
Great. Thanks very much. Transitioning now to the contractual agreement for 2025, 2026, and 2027. To the question that was raised earlier, again, there, you know, this is something to go through every year, and I think the comment that we received last year was, why do we look at this every year rather than having kind of a multi-year contract? So we do want to make sure that we've got a feel for what your priorities are and how you like to see reporting and these details. But what is before you now is a multi-year contract. It would be basically a renewal with similar terms, thank you, Camille, similar terms and services as we've provided in the past couple of years, with obviously the exception of moving to the multi-year agreement. There's a couple things that I would highlight. It's really verbatim from past years, so hopefully pretty familiar from a verbiage standpoint. But I'd highlight two things. Section 2E outlines special projects. Now, for example, that section has included in the past, and I should reference that it's page.
Four.
Four of the contract.
Yeah. Forty-six of your packet.
So the key thing I would highlight there is, you know, we've been involved and partnered with you on the report we just went through, for example, also, you know, the corridor studies, other things. The reason there's not a specific project called out there is because, obviously, with a multi-year contract, we want to make sure that what we're working on on a year-to-year basis from a special project standpoint is what you need done and most relevant. So I would envision that in addition to the contract approval, we would have a kind of an annual scope of work that would serve as an addendum to this, that would outline, you know, any particular special project that you envisioned. So that's one of the things that we would work on with the team here and certainly would welcome ideas there as well. I know that Beth and the team have some thoughts about what that could be going forward. And then the other area that I would highlight for you, Section 3C, which is on page, bear with me.
Five.
Five, yes. We are updating our progress reporting. So you'll see, and actually, you've already seen, if you looked at our last quarterly Growth Barometer Report, we're being more specific, not just about the projects we're working on and those that have come to fruition, but also the exact location of those projects and whether they fall within, for example, one township or overlap with a couple townships, so that you have a little bit more clarity on, yes, we're doing all this big, kind of big-picture stuff, but what are some specific examples of how it impacts East Bay Township? So we're trying to be more specific about that.
To those two points, if I could, first, on this last point, I think the documents that you provide are great. We do regularly update those, and you guys do a very nice job of keeping that frequency and the accuracy of when they're submitted because, you know, we always have them, and they're always in the board packets under Communication and Reports. So appreciate that. And then with your comment regarding the additional, you know, the special projects, I do think we have, and I think it was a little bit late to get into, but we will in the future, the RRC, we require a marketing strategy. And I think between Travers Connect and then our team here internally with Planning and Zoning, that that's a great next step for us to get for the township and to get that much closer to RRC certification. So we can start working on that, Claire. We could maybe float some information over that way on, okay. And we'll see if that works for you guys. Mindy?
So for the language of special projects, I propose that we remove the "as outlined below" and, and then the "upon" and make it requested instead of request.
Yeah, that's fine. So we will have, Connect will work with East Bay Township on special projects as outlined throughout the year and upon request. How does that sound?
I would like to say written request.
Oh, that's fine. And upon written request, okay. Connect will work with East Bay Township on special projects as outlined throughout the year and upon written request of the township. Does that work for you?
Absolutely.
Okay. Does that work for you as well, Mindy, and the rest of the board? Okay. Claire, are you good with that? Okay. So with that, first, do we have any further questions on this contractual agreement with Travers Connect? Okay, we do have this, as is mentioned, this year's budget. We have $16,250 budgeted for this contract, and in the first year, it is $16,225, and then it goes up by a rate of, I think it was 3%, that was in here. So is there a motion to approve the professional services contract between East Bay Township and Travers Connect as presented for the fiscal years 2025 through 2027? Is there that motion for consideration?
Yes.
Okay. Is there support?
Support.
Okay. Motion is made by.
Walters.
Walters, thank you. It never fails me, ever, and supported by Cook. Further discussion? Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed by no?
No.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote, Ian.
Walters.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
M. Cortez.
No.
S. Cortez.
Yes.
Lyle.
Yes.
And Friend.
Yes. All right, very good. Thank you. And thank you, Warren and Camille, for being here this evening. Right. We will move on to financial review and audit dates. I did not have Steve come up in January with the weather, but did look through 2024. It looks like we're ending about where we thought it would be as we've looked in November and December at audit adjustments or budget adjustments and so forth. I do just want to fill you in that our audit prep is scheduled this year for March 17th through 20th, so we'll be getting everything ready. And Raymond will be here for April 7th through April 10th. And so we'll be completing the fiscal year 2024 audit during that time, so. Any questions on that? Okay, we will move on to engineering projects. Wade Trim, Joe Slonecki is here. Hi, Joe, how are you?
Good.
Good to see you.
All right. What you have before you is a proposal to complete final design for the Forest Main project that's been going on. So this would be taking that preliminary engineering report and moving to construction documents and plans. So as you know from the last meeting, we did begin the hydraulic modeling and permitting process, and we actually have that ready to submit tomorrow morning. So we've gotten through some of the scope of this already. So we kept moving forward and try and keep this on track for getting something constructed this summer.
Yeah, excellent. Any questions for Joe? Okay, any questions regarding the contract for Joe?
No, I'm, where are we at? Not including this, where are we at with our total spend on this project for engineering?
So we're probably, the first part of the contract was not that much. I want to say like.
Thirty-four to 36,000.
Okay, I was even going to say less than that, but we can get that for you. There is an initial contract, and then there's two amendments to it. This would be the second. The first amendment was also 225.
Oh, yeah, this is the second, third phase.
Right.
Second amendment.
Right. So the first one was 225, if memory serves me.
Correct.
And this one is 225. They did come in a little under on the second amendment. I'm sorry, the first amendment, which is the second part, and included doing some of the, getting it for the permitting and so forth that we mentioned.
Yeah, and some of the 225 here, we did go over on Amendment Number One, so there's some work that we've completed prior to submitting this, so that's in, some prior work is included in that 225 number.
Yep.
And this, if I understand this right, this 225, the scope includes getting this all the way through construction?
No.
No.
This is to get Contracts One and Two.
Okay.
Out to bid, and, you know, that includes the bidding and the bid opening and all that. Typically, we switch over to construction phases at the scheduling of the pre-construction meeting.
So it'll be like a third amendment that'll be for the construction management of it.
Okay.
And I did send this over to Acme Township as well, even though it's, you know, it's our project and the contracts are based on our decisions, but we want to keep them priced. So I did send it over to Acme Township, and I think you guys were in touch with Gosling, I think, this week or last week.
Yeah, they were, they were obviously, you know, asking questions. They want to know what's going on. We didn't have the hydraulic modeling of the entire Forest Main, like in a place where we could share any information with them. We were still collecting data, working on future projected flows, basically for four townships of the county. So it was pulling a lot of pieces together because Blair runs into Garfield, which runs into their pump, which runs into the end of this. So there's, there was a lot of legwork and tracking things down and trying to figure out what districts are actually going into this main.
And I was happy with Wade Trim in that they were being delayed a little bit by some flow data from another township and their engineer and Wade Trim, and it's just a very small portion. So Wade Trim, you know, instead of it delaying the project, they went ahead and applied a safe assumption to that flow and applied to Eagle based on that. And then if there are any changes when that data comes in, then they'll submit to Eagle, like an amendment.
Yeah, that's correct. So part of this is the hydraulic model and the way this system functions, we're going to sit down with the individual townships that tie in and go over our model and. over our model and what we're seeing in the model and make sure that they agree with what we've done. And they're on board with the projections of how this is going to work. And we'll have meetings with them in order to go, just to go over all that and make sure that they're comfortable also because, you know, their systems do depend on, on this also. And if you have any questions on like where we're at with what that looks like in 20 years, I can answer those.
Optimus.
It's out there, but.
And I did let Chris Barshiff know, who is the new Garfield Township manager, know obviously that, you know, because he, he's just now getting involved in the water and sewer portion of it. And so did let him know, hey, very end of this, a small portion involves Garfield Township. So he's aware of that as well.
And the other townships like Acme and Garfield, they've been, they've been helpful. They're all very keyed into this and they understand the purpose of this. So they've been very helpful.
So they're expecting to be financial partners for their portion?
Well, we're, we're going to be looking at that with Mark Nettleton, that was here before, through Micah Myers, as well with our engineers. So it's a little early to say anything about those parameters, but we'll be taking a look at that.
Yeah, there's rough, well, there was roughly like 800 feet of shared main from that connection to the plant. So.
And my point in letting you know that I've talked with Barshiff about it is the fact that it's not just Jennifer Granholm through, no, Jennifer.
Graham.
Yeah, thank you, Graham. But I, I always am forgetting her, her, anyway, it's not just her as their engineer who knows, but it is also their administration who knows.
We, we sent lawyers requesting information to the townships and their engineers.
Okay, are there other questions?
All of the, the routing decisions have been made in alignment with what you proposed here?
Yes.
Okay.
So we took the phase, or we took the preliminary engineering route and our preferred route, and we have stuck with that through the hydraulic model and pushed the other options to the side at this point. And we're going forward with the preferred alternative for the design.
And I did talk with Brian Souza after our joint meeting about some of the questions that you had about like, hey, do you like two lines?
Yeah.
Or whatever. And there were some, some reasons that you don't do, that they're not encourage, not recommending that. One is cost.
Sure.
And so I can also have him interface with you too and some further explanation on that. But I did make sure that, you know, we took a look at that.
Yeah, yeah, we did. And there's limited benefit, particularly with how this is being placed with the existing main that's there.
Right.
So we have some provisions where there'll be tees and crossovers and potential for future connection. So that way, it, when rehabbed, the existing force main can serve as a flow.
Right.
And accommodate.
Okay.
And then particularly when you're directional drilling, you're, you're going to be doing the double the work instead of placing two mains in one trench.
Mm-hmm.
But there are separation issues.
Sure.
And space constraints where placing two mains in certain areas was, it would be very difficult.
Yeah.
Especially of mains of this size.
So your final design, the way you're going to go on the north side of Hannah Road, Hannah Avenue in the alley?
Correct.
Now, is it going to be open cut in the alley? Is it going to be off to the side within the right of way?
We're planning to put it off to the side in the right of way.
North or south side?
I believe we were looking at the north side because of driveway access and trying to keep mobility through there. There may be some spots where we do some open cut depending on how close we are to certain, certain items. So as you're working around the sewer crossings, you have to have visual on those crossings because you do not want to have a, a strike. So there's, there's always a little bit of both, but you also have receiving pits where you accept the main as it comes out of the ground and then you put the next segment back in. You can, we try to strategically place that stuff so that way you minimize disturbances.
Thank you.
Mindy?
From Woodmere to the west, there was discussion about doing two lines there and, or just one single with everybody flowing it. Are you still trying to figure that out or have you figured that out?
Uh, we, the hydraulic model assumes that it's one line.
Okay.
And everyone ties in the way they do.
Okay.
You know, there's, there's difficulty with switching over from one line to the other if you want to use both. Because how do you, how do you do that and keep everybody functioning correctly? So a lot of times it's easier to, yeah.
I just was wondering what, what was decided.
Yeah, it's kind of a constructibility and operations problem and less of like drawing it on paper to make it work.
Oh, absolutely. We can draw all kinds of things on paper that don't work in real life.
Yeah.
Are, are there any pumping upgrades that are required here?
Well, to begin, no. And for East Bay Township, it does not look like there will be. East Bay one has significant capacity to, to pump what East Bay Township is putting forth for the projected future. It looks like Garfield and Acme were going to have future pump station upgrades.
Mm-hmm.
And those are projected regardless. So if we keep the existing line in service and do the projected future flows, there's an issue. So that's why we're going to meet with the, the townships and discuss our model. Like, here's what we're seeing. Take a look at it. Do you concur? Like, are our projections off? Like, have you looked at your projections and maybe you overshot because, you know, you, you took the township growth instead of that area's growth? Because a lot of the sewer district is already pretty highly developed.
Sure.
Okay, all good questions. Any other questions? With that, is there a, a motion to approve the Wade Trim amendment number two to the professional services final design engineering contract, which is dated January 6th, 2025?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there support?
Support.
Motion is made by M. Cortez and supported by Lyle. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by no? Okay, that motion passes. Thank you. And we do also have a professional services agreement in here for Ben Zinski and Company. As I mentioned to you in the email notifying you of the meeting, I did not ask Andy Campbell to come up on this snowy mid-January date because he had covered a lot of this during the joint meeting. So, but I did want to have the board entertain a motion to approve the Ben Zinski and Company professional services agreement dated November 15th, 2024.
I have a question first, though. I, we have money in that fund. What's the reasoning that we're not just self-funding? Just?
So, well, we will, we will look at it, but regardless, Acme Township's going to have to bond for their portion of it. So that'll run through us. So if it's just Acme bonding, then they will absorb all of the costs of it. One of the reasons, and I talked with Don Lund about this, we could choose to, potentially choose to, we'd want to revisit it, make sure, pay cash for all of our side. If we do that, we will likely need to bond for future projects within the next five years. And there are a couple. So if we were to do that, then when we go to bond within the next five years, we're absorbing all of the bond costs associated with it. Bond council and, for example, disagreement. We're absorbing all of that. If we were to bond now, we share in those costs and we can pay cash for those later projects. So we're kind of keeping our options open right now. And again, Acme Township will need to bond for it. They don't have the option of paying cash for theirs.
I just was going to say, I asked the same question like a long time ago because the investments that I do make a difference as to when that money's available. And so Beth and I have been talking probably two years, three years maybe, about this project just because we knew it was coming down and, and I, I needed to know so that I could look at the investments that I was doing. And if we were to pay cash for this, it would take us down like, I wouldn't say dangerously low, but if something else blew up and we had to fix it, we, we may not be able to do it with cash.
And again, you know, this is after talking with Andy Campbell and with Don Lund, who does the rate, rate studies. So, you know, I feel like at this point, we still want to keep those options open. It is, there is still a final determination yet to be made, particularly as we have further discussions with Don. But yeah, that's where we're at at this point.
Yeah, just my two cents is that the paperwork that was passed around at the last meeting, it had four and a half percent or whatever, and I know it still could be up in the air, but showed that if we bonded for three, our portion of roughly three million, that we'd end up to pay back four and a half. That's 1.5 million dollars going out in interest. And this is a, what, 11, 12 million dollar project? Are our projects that are, you're talking about in the future going to total that amount or are they smaller in nature?
Well, again, what we'd like to do is take that type of information, put that into Excel spreadsheet and compare those. But again, right now, we're, we're still keeping ourselves flexible in doing that, especially until we get the final project costs when those proposals come in. Because I would love to see a project that comes in at the anticipated cost. But I always brace myself for otherwise.
Is the, is the interest earned on the fund, would it potentially offset the, the cost of the interest on the bonded piece?
All of that interest stays in the enterprise fund.
Yes, it does, but we're not making.
Four and a half.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. Partially offsets it.
Partially.
Until you spend it on some other project.
Yeah.
Since we're not making that determination right now.
Yeah.
I move to approve the Bradinsky and Company professional services agreement dated November 15th, 2024.
Support.
Okay, there is a motion by Walters and support by Cook. Is there further discussion? Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by no? All right, very good. We will move forward. Let's see, we are now to planning and zoning. Claire, you are up with the 2024 annual report. How are you this evening?
Good. How are you guys?
Good.
Okay, so last week, Planning Commission reviewed the annual report and made a few edits and recommended it to the Township Board. So you'll see, it starts on page 109 of your packet, but you'll see that we went through 23 site plans that were reviewed this year. Twenty-two of those were approved. One of them was withdrawn. Construction has begun on two of the projects. That was Lavender Hills and the True North Gas Station, which you'll see is well on its way to, to finalization. A few just notable items, we approved 512 dwelling units that were approved this past year, as well as 397 units for transient travelers. I will mention that a number of those, about 100, were for campers, but the other, you know, significant number was for hotel guests. Our main corridors, US 31 and Hammond, so six of our site plans were along US 31 and eight of the site plans were located along Hammond Road. So those were kind of the, the key locations. And then on the next pages, you'll see just kind of a summary, went through all of those developments with a little bit more detail. So I'm happy to answer any specific questions that you have.
Yes, just one.
Yeah, sure.
Sorry. You said 512 dwelling units minus the 397?
Plus 397.
Plus the 300. Okay. I was like, really?
No.
Okay, thank you.
So the 512 is just what was approved in 2024?
For housing units.
Yeah, we issued, you know, 49 permits for single family homes in 2024.
That's it? At a 512?
So the 512 are just the site plans that were approved. So a lot of those haven't actually gotten the land use permit yet. So for example, Brigantine, they haven't like broke ground to get the land use permit. But in terms of just single family homes, we did about 50 last year.
Okay.
Of the 512, a number of them were single family homes. For example, the Lavender Hills Development, the Brigantine. I'm probably blanking on a few, right?
Liv, is that in?
Yes, that's Brigantine rebranded. The, the new name is Liv East Bay.
I get very confused.
Yeah, Liv East Bay.
Do, do you track that, you know, kind of rearward looking on site plans that were approved in previous years of things that haven't moved forward?
Yeah, so we did, we reported last year, I think like February of kind of where we were over the last five months. And we'll probably go, we'll go back and update that spreadsheet just to, kind of once we get all of the, all of the site plans reviewed. But a number of them have not moved forward, but I would say of, of what was approved in 2024, there's nothing that we know of that's not moving forward.
Okay.
This time.
Can I just add one clarification?
Yeah, sure.
So the Brigantine property, the four mile Hammond, that earth movement that they have done would be permitting through the county because they've taken down all of the trees and they have dug down right next to that home that is closest to the roundabout.
So they officially received their land use permit, I think, the end of last week. And I think their mobilization started last week. Yeah.
I think the way the weather was, it was ideal for them to start doing some of that?
Yeah.
Next week, probably not.
Yeah, yeah. No, good question.
I'm sorry, were you talking on the northeast corner?
On the northwest.
Northwest corner. Okay, because you had mentioned Brigantine, okay.
So did I say the wrong name?
Nope, nope.
You're, you're good. Yeah, I think that's.
Unless you want to update, the company calls it Liv AE or Liv East Bay now. They've changed it. Brigantine to Liv AE to now Liv East Bay.
Any other development related questions? So moving on to the zoning tax amendments, we had four amendments that were approved this past year plus the, the new zoning ordinance. So four of those were kind of just Band-Aids where we had certain developments or certain applicants that were looking to move quickly related to car wash, childcare, the, the Liv East Bay development. But then the zone, the new zoning ordinance was approved in December, so that's on the books now. We have, you know, a list, not a long list, but a list of amendments that we are going to kind of continue to work on. So we're not, not done, but I think it's, we've heard just from people using it, from some of the applicants, that it's been really usable, user friendly. They've appreciated it. We had, the Planning Commission had their first site plan review last month with the new ordinance. And I think overall, Mindy, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it went pretty smoothly.
There's some confusion because we're all used to having, to go to public comment on a site plan review for which we did not have.
Yeah. For variances and appeals, we, so there were one, two, three, four, there were five appeals this year, this past year, which is significantly less than what we've had in kind of historically. Three of those were denied, one was withdrawn and only one was approved. So we're seeing a lot fewer ZBA variances granted. I think part of that is just training with the ZBA as well as kind of getting our ordinance in order and having, having fewer, fewer needs for variances. having, having fewer, fewer needs for variances. As I mentioned, single fam, land use permits, we permitted 49 single-family homes this past year, 151 permits. So a lot of those are garages, decks, accessory structures, those types of things. In terms of short-term rentals, so if you'll recall, we have 145 licenses available. And right now, we have 136 licenses. So we're going to have, we're going to have licenses available, which is really astonishing. I was thinking we were good for at least 10 years or so. But we are in the process, probably getting ready for this winter or spring prior to the next season. We'll be public, public noticing those available licenses, looking at, we're probably going to have eight, possibly nine. We have one more applicant that we're working with right now. So we'll be kind of moving forward with that process of, of noticing. And Sam's in the process of mapping out kind of where all the existing licenses are with the 1,000-foot buffer. So we'll be able to quickly respond when, when people call to inquire, can I get a license? So we've got a number of neighborhoods where you just can't get a license because there's no properties that are, that, that meet that 1,000-foot buffer. So I think slowly, although we do have licenses available, we're slowly kind of reconfigure, you know, better distributing.
Distributing.
The licenses throughout the township. So we don't have those clusters in certain areas.
And we do have the deed restrictions too, that we honor the deed restrictions, though we don't enforce them. So.
On that, with that many dropping off, and I know it's fairly recent, but have you done any research why?
You know, I think it's a multitude. Some have said, you know, they're not, not a fan of, you know, the more strict regulations. I don't, you know, our regulations aren't that much stricter. We do have the septic ordinance requirements. I think other sentiments that, as properties change hands, so if they're not as lucrative, or they decide to, you know, sell their property, then, then they, that goes back into the pot.
Yeah, well, I just, a little bit of a pessimist, that I think some of them might have dropped off so they could just do it in private and not, hopefully not get caught.
That's one of the things that's in here in a minute.
Mm-hmm. But, just.
Yeah. We have, so Sam has been continuing to send out letters, and so GOV OS is identifying any, any, anyone that's operating without a license, and we're finding that there's not, not very many of those.
We're also making sure that, because they have a new license number, their license number changed from host compliance to GOV OS. So Sam's notifying them to make sure that in their advertisement, they have, they have the license number there and they have the updated license. So they don't get a potential violation in error.
Yeah. So moving on to code enforcement, you'll see that we've kind of tried to expand our categories here. So we've got nine different categories of enforcement cases. You'll see the number of cases, the number that are resolved, some that are still pending or unresolved, and the number of tickets. So the majority of our cases really have been resolved. I think you'll see the ones that are unresolved are kind of in the process, or Bill's kind of in the process, has a plan, working with them, just hasn't closed out those cases yet. So the other category, those include violations that are related to building setbacks, building without a permit, violations of the Planning Commission's site plan review. So it's kind of the catch-all for other, for other categories. So happy to address any kind of general questions related to code enforcement activity. I think, you know, Bill has been very proactive the, the past year or two. And so I think we are, we are seeing, you know, better compliance and better awareness of our ordinances. And if there's any specific questions I can't answer, I can definitely re, get, get with Bill tomorrow morning and, and follow up with you.
On, on the other category, you said that had to do a lot with deviations from approved plans and setbacks of the 28, 21 have been resolved. How are those being resolved in general?
Yeah, so oftentimes, it's not necessarily a violation. It's a, these are, these are cases. So sometimes they're a complaint when Bill goes out and investigates, they're not a violation.
Okay.
And oftentimes, that is the case. You know, we have had a few issues where, you know, one example, a home was built in the wrong location. It required an easement. And so to make sure that that, so that the home was not on somebody else's property. And so that was, you know, resolved in that way. But generally, it's not, you know, it's not requiring moving buildings and stuff like that.
We've also updated the form. We ask people to, instead of, they can obviously call planning and zoning, but we prefer, and we ask them to fill out the online form so that we can do a better job of tracking these and making sure that we have them because they come right in on email and we can easily track them. And we've updated that form. So now, instead of just saying like, what's your complain or what's your alleged violation, it says, what ordinance do you think is being violated? And what section of the ordinance do you think is being violated? And that puts the person in a position, we don't want them to necessarily have to become a scholar on ordinance enforcement, but it makes them think about, okay, is this truly a violation? Is this not allowed within the township by, by an ordinance? So hopefully that will help on some that are, where they're often deemed, you know, that's, that's not an issue of the township under its authority.
Yeah. So moving along, trainings attended, staff attended MTA trainings, Michigan Association of Planning, Housing Summit. I had the opportunity to present at a couple of different conferences and workshops this year. Sam, did want to mention that Sam has signed up for the zoning administrator certification training in February. So we'll have both Sam and Bill certified in the zoning administrator. In terms of planning department projects, as you know, we, the zoning ordinance adoption was a big, was a big one for this year. Additionally, Safe Routes to School trail extension and the Three Mile Trail Extension have continued just to make progress on that. A lot, most, the majority of our easements are in place, which is exciting for Safe Routes to School. So we're anticipating 2026 construction in partnership and conjunction with the road commission's upcoming project on Hammond Road. The, we are going to be seeking gap funding for Safe Routes to School. And so we are looking at, MEDC has a RAP, it's Revitalization and Placemaking Grant. And so that grant application is due January 30th. That is going to be for, to support the Three Mile Trail development, the gap funding that we have. So we, if you'll recall, we have received 1.5 million dollars from Safe Routes to School through MDOT, Michigan Fitness Foundation. We still have gap there. And then in addition to the actual trail construction, we're looking at some safety enhancements related to lighting. We're also looking at just extending the sidewalk from the intersection of Hammond and Three Mile, just to get people to the library and to the township hall as we, you know, with the farmer's market, library activities and community garden, and just kind of more going on here. So with this, with this large RAP grant, we're going to be looking at gap funding for the trail, placemaking amenities along the trail, particularly lighting and safety. And then we're also looking to fund that, the Civic Plaza. And so that's a, we have a conceptual design. It's the, True North is granting us a small easement right next to their property where it would be just a small plaza, kind of trail side place where people can stop. There's benches, there's seating, kind of some interpretive signage, education around wetlands, bike fix-it station, those types of things. So that's the, the grant application that we're looking at for January submission. And to be competitive, we're just in the process of kind of going through the financial match and support that the township is providing. So, you know, to date, we've, the township has supported the conceptual design for the Civic Plaza. That was $1,500 to Beckett and Raider. And then just the Prine and Newhoff for all of the design engineering that's gone in. So we're documenting the, the commitment to date, which we're at $127,000 that's gone, that's been committed to Prine and Newhoff for that design engineering for the trail. And then we're also looking to commit $100,000 in that gap funding. So that would be, that would be something that would be coming back to the township board upon a successful grant award. But just wanted to mention that to the, to the township board tonight as a, as a pretty large grant that we're looking at. The, the total grant application will be around a million dollars. And the majority is the gap funding for the Three Mile Trail, just with the, with the cost associated with that.
Mentioned too, that Olson Foundation recently allocated $50,000 for the Three Mile Trail. And that goes through TART, but that application was done through TART and East Bay Township. So we're very happy and thankful for the Olson Foundation's support. And also did want to mention on the training part, that the zoning administrator certificate training, I believe that's being done remotely. And a shout out to PAR Plan, because that is being covered by a PAR Plan grant allocation for their, you know, they do for certain certifications. So.
So looking ahead to 2025, and this was kind of builds on the discussion that we had with the Planning Commission last week, some of the priority projects that we have moving forward, we're going to be updating, developing the capital improvement program, hoping to facilitate a non-motorized public visioning effort, and including securing engineering design, funding for the key trail corridors, and then the construction of Safe Routes to School and the Three Mile Trail. The third one, completing the RRC certification through MEDC. And I, I know it's something we've been working on for a while. I think we're really close to getting that certification and, and some recent presentations by MEDC. I think that certification is really going to open the township up for a lot more like focused effort from MEDC, where they can kind of go out and help us kind of market some of our priority redevelopment sites, bring in developers that are more consistent with the township's vision and kind of what we've identified that we want for some of these properties. So I think that that could be, and, and plus opens up to kind of more financing options for developers to help support mixed use and, and some of the types of development that we're looking for. Because they're not, they're not financing hotels, they're financing other types of kind of commute, like projects that they, that fit within their kind of what, what is benefiting community and placemaking and those types of things. Four is adoption of the Beach District Vision and Action Plan. And that's going to be presented to you at our joint meeting in February. And then we're looking to, after that action plan is adopted, hoping to kind of move forward on making meaningful progress on the implementation of that action plan. And specifically looking at a financing mechanism. And then number five is, we've got a number of zoning ordinance items to move forward on. So that list is revisiting the allowances for camping on private property, revisiting the appropriate density in areas outside of the urban growth boundary, also exploring some incentive tools for preserving open space. And then the last one is revisit, revisiting sign and billboard standards in our commercial districts. Those are kind of our key zoning items that we're going to be moving forward on over this winter. So.
Claire, one item that I wonder if, if we could look back and see, I think that we had talked about the Planning Commission looking at this too, is, is any hotels within the Beach District making sure that they have public amenities through the site plan? Because that's not written into the zoning ordinance right now. But I recall that, you know, we had talked a bit about that and thought that there may be some merit in that.
Yep. I think once we adopt the Beach District Plan, there's that one and a couple other zoning changes that we'll definitely be looking at.
Okay. And then the other thing I wanted to mention, and you touched upon this, was the Phase One or Segment One of Three Mile Trail. I'm sure you've heard, received an email that we did have the, the DNR trust fund. We were in the, one of the applications that was approved this year with TART, East Bay Township was the applicant. And it was definitely like Christmas at that meeting because they spent millions more than they have in preceding years. They just, their fund, they needed to, to spend that, a certain amount. And their investments had done a very good job for them. And so they did just that. And it was quite a jovial atmosphere during that meeting with the attendees, because a lot of them had their, most of them had their projects funded. But we did have Segment One on there. Now, you'll recall, there were two, there were two applications, Segment One and Segment Two. Segment Two was pulled prior to the December meeting because the match money that would have been used for Segment Two had not been secured yet. It was another grant process where we were leveraging that funding. And so we had to have that funding or an approval of that funding by October 1st. We didn't have that. So that can be a subsequent grant application, but it couldn't go through in that year. But we were successful on Segment One, which will be a small portion of the trail that goes where the trail ends. And people are like, where does this trail go? The sidewalk just literally ends. At Three Mile and South Airport, it will go for, I don't know, two-tenths of a mile, something like that. And then it'll go, goes inward, as you know, we're not going along the road. It'll go inward. It's a far more room and less property owners and all of those things. But anyway, Segment One will be that short portion of the trail and then be a trailhead there with parking. And I believe it has, it's accessible for buses potentially as well. Like it's designed that it would, you could drive a bus in there. So that will be, even just that portion of the trail is valuable because, you know, if you've ever been on the TART trail up towards Parsons, parking is not that great. And so this will be really nice to have that designated parking component and kickstart that, that portion of the Three Mile Trail. It'll also give a lot more support for subsequent grant applications and having the Safe Routes to School to connect to that trailhead. So that'll, that's a beneficial piece. And we were really glad the DNR trust fund found that it was a worthwhile application.
So any questions on the annual report? I was going to just go over quickly the master plan dashboard, which is, which is related. And that begins on page 116. And then we can, I can answer any questions on the annual report. But you'll see with this master plan dashboard, our intent is just to kind of provide this as, use this template and on an annual basis, provide kind of an update on, on where we're at. So over the last year, we have completed 11 of the actions that were in the adopted action plan. So you'll see those completed actions are listed out by category, housing and neighborhood, community facilities, natural resources, economic development, and farmland. A lot of those actions were related to the zoning ordinance rewrite. But we also, in addition to those 11 completed actions, we also, you'll see, have nine actions that are nearing completion. And so those are kind of moving forward with those and talking with the Planning Commission. The septic policy option was, was one that was brought up. And I did want to mention that we're planning to have Grand Traverse County Health Department come and just provide an update of kind of where the county is with looking at septic protection ordinances and kind of figure out, I think, I think it does make a lot of sense to have kind of a coordinated cohesive approach by all the townships because that really helps with streamlining the administration from the county's perspective. So Beth and I have attended some of the subcommittee meetings where the county is looking at that ordinance. And so the health department will provide an update on that in February. But beyond that, you know, I think we've got a busy year ahead in 2025 and have some exciting projects that we're, that we're looking forward to work on.
Any questions for Claire on the dashboard or on the annual report? Claire, it was a very nice job on the report and the work throughout the year. And I know how much you and Bill and Sam have put into these accomplishments, and it is appreciated. how much you and Bill and Sam have put into these accomplishments, and it is appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to cover the next topic, the special events ordinance?
So the special events ordinance, this was kind of precipitated by Protect Forest Lakes had sent a letter to Planning Commission with some concerns about the special event ordinance. The, the concerns that were voiced were like very, pretty narrow and specific in scope, but the Planning Commission took it as an opportunity to kind of look more broadly at special events and how they're administered, and kind of how we can make the ordinance a little bit more usable and reduce the possibility of negative impacts on adjacent properties, adjacent neighbors. In working through that, so the Planning Commission first reviewed, discussed it in September, and then kind of revisited it, provided us with some direction on drafting the ordinance, and then revisited a draft of the ordinance in December. But one kind of item that we discussed is that it's, it's really, it's currently a transient activity ordinance, and it's not so much about transient activity, it's really a special events ordinance. And we looked at other communities and kind of how they regulate special events, and we pulled from some of our neighboring jurisdictions, as well as other townships throughout the state. We looked at the special events that we've permitted over the last, you know, three or four years, just kind of see what, what types of permits are we seeing, what is the frequency, what are, what are some of the issues that were, that we've experienced? And so we, we worked with Fahy Schultz to kind of review the existing, use the transient activity ordinance as it exists as a basis, and then made, didn't, didn't want to kind of scrap it and start from, start fresh. We took that as a basis and just made some changes to it. So you'll see this draft of the special event ordinance is, is pretty similar to the transient activity ordinance, we've just made, changed the name and made some changes to it. So some of the changes that we've made, one is that we kind of better articulated the community benefits that special events should provide, so that kind of the intent behind the ordinance and what we're looking at with future special events is that they provide some kind of a, a community benefit. We require documentation showing that the proposed special event is not in conflict with an approved site plan or special land use permit. So that was one kind of small issue with one, one specific incident, but kind of applying that more globally, making sure that, that any special events are, are not in conflict with any prior approvals. We extend, extends any organized gathering, it basically applies to any organized gathering of at least 200 people or other types, there's other types of gatherings, less than 200, that this would also apply to. So if you look at, this would be page.
122?
Yeah, 122 of what qualifies as a special event. So a flea market, open air market, so again, those, those types of events, it doesn't have to have at least 200 people. All of these, all of these items listed, art, music, food, festival, are all examples of special events, plus any organized gathering of more than 200 people. That's kind of the, the definition that we're using. We are discussed limiting the number of special events per private property to three, because I think what we're seeing is, you get up to, you know, some, private property is having six, seven special events, it's really not a special event, it's becoming more of an event venue. And so then the expectation is that they would go through Planning Commission's site plan review to get approval to be an event venue. And then we provided some additional details requiring, like details on noise control, lighting plans, sound, and any proposed amplification, emergency response plan, so just a little bit more detailed information, site restoration timeline, so kind of using the, what we have as a basis, but trying to provide a little bit more detailed information. So I think what we found overall is that in general, our, the events in East Bay Township are, are working well, but I think there is some opportunity to reduce some of the potential negative impacts on, on neighbors.
Question. Now if I read this right, if somebody wants to have a garage sale, are they going to need to get a permit?
They, I believe garage sales are exempt.
Only it says seven days.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the way it's been for quite a while.
How do we, how do we determine if they've had seven days and a 60-day period unless you get a complaint?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we, I think it's pretty rare, but you do have the kind of garage sales that just go on and on and on.
There are some that go on for, they call themselves estate sales.
Yeah, yeah, so that kind of provides that protection in place, where we can use that as an enforcement mechanism.
Okay, the other question I have is, you could have up to 200 with a permit. Can that be held in a residential area?
Not up to 200.
You can have 200 numbered required such a permit. Am I missing something? This is under.
Yeah, so, so.
How many can you have in a special gathering in a residential area?
We don't have a limit on that.
So you could have 200 people in a residential area?
Lasting no more than 24 hours.
Well, yeah, but where are you going to park all the cars?
And I mean, that, that's the way our ordinance is right now, we allow, we don't, we don't really have any confines within that. So, you know, theoretically, someone could say, you know, hey, I'm having a concert, and, you know, we'd require all of the information, Metro Fire to review, kind of have all of those plans in place, a site plan, but we don't, we don't have any limits on the size of the event.
We haven't had any problems yet with parking? I mean, that's first thing.
You know, we've had, we've had some challenges that we've worked through, like, for example, some of our larger events, Iceman, but I think, you know, have kind of worked with the event organizers and found, found solutions.
I guess maybe a suggestion, or maybe you guys have used a suggestion, that if somebody's going to come in for a permit, and I don't care what they're going to have there, but they're going to have a ton of people there, can we require that they give some kind of parking before they get a permit, so that you don't end up with a problem? In other words, if I come in, I'm going to have some doing, I'm going to have, even if I had 100 people, I, we need to put the burden on them, where are they going to park these people?
Yeah.
And before we give them the permit.
Yeah, so that's, that's part of what we require, is if you have, you know, how many people are coming, where are they going to park? So we require them to show on a site plan where, where they would accommodate the parking.
That's.
Okay, so they're going to be required to show where the parking, okay.
Yeah, so this new, with this new ordinance, we do require more detailed documentation of what their, what their plan is.
So if you, if you look at Section Three, under C5, it's on page four of the document, page 124 of our board packet, it details what the sketch plan will have to show. One thing too, I do want to mention, that was a little bit separate than this, but this doesn't cover, you know, special events that may come through our township. So we've had that before, like, we've had people call, like, what's going on with a special event? Well, it's not starting nor stopping in, in our township. So it is using the road, the road right away to, to traverse it. Those are not permitted. They're just.
Using the road.
Using the road, so.
The one discussion that we did have with the Planning Commission was on public properties and a desire to, you know, to still permit public properties the same way we would a private property, if a, if a publicly owned, you know, property, say for example, you know, the State Park campground wanted to have a festival, we would permit that. We're not limiting it to a certain number of special events per year, just because the, the perspective, I think from the Planning Commission and Mindy, feel free to jump in, is that the, a public property, you don't necessarily want to limit, you know, you don't want to choose winners and losers, so it's, you know, because it is public and it's available to the public, we don't necessarily want to limit it to only certain groups. So that's why it's a limited, limit of three events per year on private properties.
So with this, we're not asking right now to introduce this or anything like that, we're just using the opportunity of the Planning Commission report to bring this to you, to take a look at it. So if you would, over the next, I would say Claire week or two, if you have any specific input, provide it, provide it to Claire as well. We did receive an email with a few points on it, and so if any of those resonate with you, you know, let us know if those resonate with you, and we'll take a look at those or get the answer to them and so forth. Because I know some of them, you can't do, but we would further explain that if, if that resonated with any board members here. But then we'll take a look at bringing this back for introduction, February or March?
Yeah, I think depending on direction from the board.
Okay, sure.
The ordinance seven of 2010 was a county-wide ordinance, if I remember correctly.
Was it?
And it had to be exact for our, the prosecuting attorney to defend us. And so we're going away from that with this new ordinance.
Interesting, I didn't think it was a.
I don't think it was a county ordinance.
There was, I think there, there was a noise ordinance, junk ordinance.
Noise ordinance and junk were.
That had to be, and it seemed like there, I don't remember the, for sure, but I know the junk and noise.
So a couple of things, one is, I don't believe the transient activity was, I remember when Leslie was doing some research based on the transient activity, when they were starting to look at that, and it was township-focused at that time. That's what my memory tells me. You're right, the noise and the junk were county ordinances, but remember, the county found that they couldn't have an ordinance regarding that, so they went out to all the townships and passed the very same thing, just what you're talking about, try to keep them uniform, so the enforcement would be the same. The county did go through a process just in the, oh gosh, within the last four years, I want to say, of going through all their ordinances and cleaning them up. And I was just on that site today, and I wish I could remember specifically, but it's very limited, the ordinances they have. I don't recall anything regarding this, we'll certainly check on that, but.
If I didn't be remembering wrong, but I just remember when we were going through them, it was like, how, okay, so, but what about the things that we feel have a priority? And if it was changed anyway, then the prosecuting office would not defend us, we'd be on our own.
Sure, yep.
Takes a phone call. Does there need to be, maybe I'm splitting hairs here, but does there need to be a carve-out for events that are hosted and sponsored by the township itself? For example, the, the sliding party, would that be?
It's on public property.
Did I understand that public property was going to be included with this?
It is, yep. So I don't think we have, I'm trying to remember, I think we did discuss this. I'll go back and see how we, I think the township is exempt, but I'll go back and double-check it, so thank you.
We're obviously exempt from our zoning ordinances, but this isn't a zoning ordinance, this is a general police power ordinance. Okay, any other questions right now on the special events ordinance? And we'll direct any comments, then any further questions or comments that you have to Claire, and she can work on those, particularly if there's a central theme with the Planning Commission.
So this will have an introduction at the Township Board level, and then a public hearing for adoption. Thank you.
Okay, anything else, Claire?
No.
All right, well, thank you for your work on that, and the thank you to the Planning Commission for their work on it, Mindy. With that, we will go on to the Clerk's Department, there is a part-time job description, and that begins on page 138 of the board packet. Are there any questions for Sue regarding this? Or Sue, was there anything that you wanted to mention regarding the job description?
No, I took the words of the Board at the 18th, November 18th meeting, and tried to come up with something that can work with a flexible schedule. Will be interesting to see what type of interest we get, but we've got to start somewhere. The job description is for your review, it's from parts and parcels of ours, plus what the MTA recommended as the bullet points that an election assistant can help with. I provided to you the minutes that were approved from the November 18th meeting, the adopted budget for 2025 for Department 262, and again, as you've all read it many times, but Michigan Township's Association publication on what can be done for the clerk and election duties to lighten the load.
Okay, well, thank you. And again, that's on page 139 and 140 is the job description. Any questions for Sue?
Thank you, go ahead.
Sure, Mindy?
Do you want to stay with the term election assistant, based on, on this MTA memo, or would you prefer a different job description?
Well, I think the way I interpreted it is that MTA recommends it be called an election assistant, not a specialist or those types of things, because they're totally different.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that was what you want, if you will, because it is very specific.
And you, you had voiced before, it was intended to help with the election process. Okay. Okay, Glenn, did you have a question?
Yeah, I guess, and I don't, I guess I don't know the answer, what is required by the state to be an election assistant?
They need to be certified, they need to go through training for the, the Michigan Qualified Voter File Program.
Okay.
That is the first thing to do, and that is through an online or in-person class with the Secretary of State's Department of Elections, Bureau of Elections, to allow them to have access to the voter files. And then ongoing continued education to maintain that accreditation for that. And then ongoing training that helps with training inspectors, and it will be a lot of hands-on and guidance from myself and my deputy, as they learn how to go through updating master cards, which would be addresses, voting precincts, helping with that part of it. Those types of things are done at a state level and at a local level with online continuing education as well.
Okay, and the reason I ask that is when I looked down through the additional expectations to be the membership, plus certified, that a clerk or deputy clerk would be certified. But the person, chances are, if they didn't live in the township, they could never be the clerk, or the deputy, well, I guess deputy doesn't have to be, but I'm just wondering, and I guess maybe, you know, call me a tightwad, whatever, but the expense that it takes to go through these, I know that you've got it, and your deputy has got it, and I would think that would be sufficient, rather than putting a part-time person through all that. And I'm, it's just a concern.
I get that, so look at it this way, the reasoning that additional assistance is needed is because Holly and I each, in 2024, worked over 800 hours above and beyond 2,080 hours to make. 2024, worked over 800 hours above and beyond 2,080 hours to make sure that the election was accurate, it was, um, above reproach, that there was an assurance to the voters as well as to the state and to the candidates, that that is, um, accurately done. To have someone in the office that can take several of those days so we can, um, give one of us a day off or a partial day off, they have to be able to serve the public at that same level of accuracy and assurances. If they don't have it, um, we're still going to be here. We're still going to be putting in those massive amounts of, over, above and beyond. We don't get paid for it because it's by salary. But if they are just an occasional come in, um, they're not going to be able to be utilized in the manner that's going to be best, um, to keep us all around and to keep us up and running.
I thought this was a position just to help out with elections, not to cover the office when no one's there.
It's all election related. So the, the 14 days before the election, the nine days of early voting, they would be qualified. One, that person would either be with Holly or I where then the other of us can be away from the office. They would be at that same level of training and knowledge, whether they're part-time or full-time, they would be utilized in that manner. And education through the MAMC, through MTA, through this Bureau of Elections, all of those help to reinforce that stabilized front. They can't go in, for instance, they can't do a FOIA. That's not allowed by this, the title. It's election-based only. But they can assist with training. So when we do seven training sessions with certification for all of our inspectors, those are all done on nights and weekends, that they would be able to assist in that training, which again, could allow one of us to maybe have one of those days of continuous, um, work away. But we would, our inspectors would have the assurances that the information that they are being shared, being shared with them is accurate. Yes, they'll have the handout, but there's one thing to talk the words on a handout and there's quite another to be expert at it or knowledgeable with it. And, um, there is some degree of having to invest in that, that, um, position to be able to do that.
How many days of training, night training do you have?
It all depends on the year. Um, we do not train right now during the business hours. We can't because of all of the people that come in and want an absentee ballot, want to register, um, have questions, different things that way. So typically, um, there's a very set time when you can do recertification for inspectors. It's every even year and it's through, um, the end of June, end of June through July. And then we do subsequent training. They do three hours initially. And then for, um, their specific duties, if they are working in the next election, if they are doing the poll book or if they're doing a chairperson, if they're doing early voting, that's additional training. And those are two to three hours at a time, hands-on, um, working with the electronic poll book, understanding all of the functions of that and how to, um, make sure you have the right voter in front of you to issue a ballot with the right precinct or the right, um, we had, um, what was it? 17 ballot styles in November with early voting to make sure they got the right ballot. All of that takes hands-on training as well. There's.
So is there a difference between the Michigan Professional Municipal Clerk Certification and Certified Municipal Clerk and the officials training accreditation, election officials training accreditation?
There is.
So as I read this memo, this additional expectations of the MIPMC and the CMC is not discussed in here or did I miss it?
Um, it is part of the additional expectations that they are a member of the organizations and that they start to attend classes to be certified to that level. It's a three-year minimum commitment. They may not get through all of it before, you know, they move down, especially when it's a part-time position. But if I did not, um, and, and who knows? I don't know who's going to apply for this position. They may already be those things.
Wait, but, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, I was just saying, I wasn't sure that was what Mindy was asking. I think you were asking, are these items mentioned? Because I see you looking at a different page. Were these items mentioned in the, what can I do for clerk in election? Correct?
Yeah. So I'm looking at page 156 of the packet and I'm looking at the clerk initial training, um, the deputy clerk and the election assistant training. And I see that for the election duties, that the clerk is required within six months to get the election officials training accreditation. Um, and then they have to do it, um, every other year, I think it says?
They would be, okay. So it's a little bit different because they are an assistant. They're not the clerk. Or in the case that the clerk's not there, they're not the deputy clerk. When I came into office 19 years ago, my gosh, Thursday, Thursday, 19 years, um, the first thing I had to do was run a recall election. I didn't have six months to get certified. So there were other clerks that had to come in and be the certified clerk. I could work at, I could be the administrator of it, but I couldn't sign it as being certified. That has to be done within six months as the primary person that is, um, responsible for the statutory duty of elections. The, um, the, the first primary requirement is to be able to get minimally certified, to get on the computer, to be able to work with the voter files. That's not a six months thing. That's, that's different. There are, um, Holly is also certified. I made her go through that process before she even started in the office. She went through training, um, to get that initial step in kind of thing. But then, um, in, there are two-day trainings, three-day trainings, one day and online to be able to get to those levels for initial certification. And then, um, every two years, we go through additional training with the state. That doesn't cost anything. That's part of the requirement to continue to be able to administer the elections. Am I, am I answering or are you looking for something different still?
Well, I'm thinking that this, under additional expectations, the second would-be bullet is not the same as what it's saying that the person needs to do in this document.
It's, it's different training. This is done through the state. This is through the Clerks Association.
So I guess if we're an election assistant and the election assistant isn't required by this MTA, how do you help your clerk? Is it really an additional expectation or is it, I mean, maybe somebody doesn't want to be a clerk ever? Maybe they just want to work.
A little bit of style about being a clerk is, I don't read it. If you're not a member of the Clerks Association, you can't go to the election training that they offer.
You can't go through the state training?
You can go through the state, but they're two separate things.
No, I understand that. I understand that. But she's, she's asking what is required for the election assistant? What training's required and, and what is not necessarily required? Now that, now what you're saying is you have to be a member of the Clerks Association to do that, MIPC, MPMC or the CMC. And that's, I get that. You have to be, just like to go through, you know, you have to be a member to go through their training. You probably have the same thing.
Yeah. To go to institute, I had to be a member of the State Treasurer Association.
Yeah. But what Mindy's, I think, saying is you don't have to be a member of that. You don't have to do that training in order to do the training you need for an election official, because that's through the state. Is that what?
There's training through the state, but there's also straight training through the Clerks Association. It's like saying, well, we'll let you go to the MTA, but we're not letting you go to the Treasurer's Association because that's different training. But you've got to be a member.
Can I just interrupt, please? This person would also be part of the Grand Traverse County Clerks Association where they would attend meetings. There is also trainings there. I guess if it doesn't say so in the MTA, MTA is not the MAMC. They are two separate organizations. MTA, um, covers all elected positions, all seven, plus Planning Commission, those things. The MAMC is strictly, um, city township, village and county clerks, deputy clerks assistants. There are many that have, many clerk's offices have their election assistants attending these because it does strengthen, um, the office and the ability to serve the public, which is, I think, um, in my opinion, it's, it's very important. It's, it's way up there. It is something they feel comfortable with so that they can answer those questions without turning and looking at someone else and saying, can you answer this? Because I don't know. By being able to go through additional trainings, ongoing trainings, their comfort level and knowledge expands. And it is, um, it's not just a once every six months, um, obligation to come in and work in the office.
So a question for you. If you're a member of MAMC, you can take any of their trainings.
Yes.
You don't necessarily have to go and become a professional municipal clerk.
Some of those would go towards that.
So I think you could be a member to hit the, uh, just have a membership. Usually those memberships are like anywhere from like 45 to 120 bucks.
It would be a hundred dollars a year.
Yeah.
They just upped it by 20.
But you don't necessarily have to do all of the other training that takes, you know, like a week to three weeks or whatever.
Many clerk, um, clerk departments throughout the state do require that they receive that. It would be in a minimum of three years for them to go through that, that program. But as they are ongoing, trying to do that, it's a benefit to their communities.
Do they, just, I'm only comparing it to what the Treasurers go through and we don't do elections, so we don't cover any elections. But so is there, is there training in that, in the institute that is just elections?
There is.
But it's not the required stuff that they need to run the QVF and?
Not to, not to be able to access the Qualified Voter File. It's, um, to be able to continue certification. They will do some of that. The Bureau will come and provide that during Institute or Master Academy. They provide, um, ongoing updates. They present at MTA, they present at MAMC, they present at the IIMC, they present on their own. They do many outreach programs, but yes.
Okay.
So this position, the way the board, um, directed it November 18th, um, I think as the approved minutes said, it was a two-day-a-week position, um, based on the total budget of 12,500 for the year. So it would be a flexible at this point. We have not brought, um, either of our election inspector, chairpeople that came in and helped during the 2024 election, um, at this point, although we could sure use them so that, um, we can try to focus on this new person coming in, um, being able to come in and, and work those hours through the year to, to be fully ready for the 2026 elections.
And the, the, those that you had, I think it was two ladies, um, who would be electionists.
They're welcome to apply.
Yeah, they would be election assistants. They were already trained, trained with the QVF and trained to do anything with the elections.
And there are several retired clerks that may not want to run their townships or their city anymore, but they might want to come and work part-time. We don't know. And that would save some of that certification cost if that is truly the case. But I, I don't know. I haven't reached out to anyone. I don't even have someone in mind right now. But I would welcome any of, any of those folks that have left the clerk world or the two gals that did an amazing job for us in 2024, if they have an interest. Certainly I want them to submit an interest.
The other item there, I just had, uh, the notary? Is that required for elections?
There are some documents with elections, the, um, the affidavits, those have to be notarized. And so it just made sense to me that they would go for that as well.
Okay.
Other questions? Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the presented job description for the part-time elections assistant.
Or?
Okay. There is a motion by Walters and support by Lyle. Further discussion? I'll just note, I, I support having the additional, um, the 12,500, a temporary election assistant or part-time election assistant in the office. That's fine. I don't agree with, um, their need for it to become, um, Michigan Professional Municipal Clerk and, um, or certification as a certified municipal clerk. That's unnecessary for that position. And then, and the reason I point that out specifically is in this document and here it does talk about an election assistant. And specifically, I, I can't find the verbiage right now. I was just looking at it a second ago. But specifically says they may not do things that are, um, other than elections in the Clerks Department. And so, um, that to me seems inconsistent with that document. So.
Respectfully disagree. And, and, and we know that we can still do that and get along, but it is part of, um, the election process that they are knowledgeable and able to assist the voters.
Oh, I have no problem with them being knowledgeable and I, I do think that they would be so through the state training and potentially just having a membership and attending that, um, portion of it. But I know how extensive those trainings can be. And so I would just, um, I, I don't think that that should put, be put on that job description, again, through the direct verbiage of the document from, uh, here. Oh, yeah. It says, it's clear the election assistant cannot do any non-election clerk duties and is not an additional deputy clerk. And I think that that is more what this is garnered towards. So, but that's the additional discussion. Again, motion by Walters, support by Lyle. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no, no. So it'll show that friend, um, dissents. And with that, we are at public comment. Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, um, our next upcoming meeting is February 10th. Yes, Mindy?
When's the joint meeting? Is it January 21st or February 21st? Did you change it?
So, yep.
Oh, goodness.
Yep. The document was just, it was, we were pushing too hard to get that document together. It needed some more draft revisions. And so did the, um, joint meeting in February then. So thank you for pointing that out. So our next meeting then is February 10th, 2025. And unless there's any objections, then we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. Have a good evening. Drive safe.